Hey Bobby, can you hear me?
All right, folks, good evening. I want to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The date is July 15th, 2024. The time is now 7:02 PM. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. And that's going to take us to invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we gather here today with gratitude in our hearts for the opportunity to serve our community. We come before you in a spirit of unity and hope, seeking your guidance and blessing upon this meeting and all who are present. In the wake of Hurricane Beryl, we have faced challenges and hardships, particularly the power outages that have affected so many in our community. We pray for your strength and comfort for those who are still struggling to recover. Grant wisdom and perseverance to the workers who are tirelessly restoring power and rebuilding what has been lost. May we find resilience and compassion within ourselves and each other as we work together to overcome these difficulties. Lord, our nation is also reeling from the recent assassination attempt on former President Donald Trump. In these times of turmoil, we ask for your healing presence to be felt across our country. Help us to remember that we are stronger together, united in our shared values and common humanity. Let us rise above division and hatred, seeking instead to build bridges of understanding, peace, and cooperation. Guide our discussions and decisions today that they may be marked by wisdom, fairness, and a genuine desire to serve the greater good. May we always be mindful of the trust placed in us by the people of Jersey Village and strive to honor that trust in all that we do. We ask for all of these things in your holy name, O Lord. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to, we have no presentation, so we're going to move on to item D, joint public hearings. So just want to make sure everyone's aware, so that no one gets thrown off and worried that they're not getting called up for public comment. We have a number of public hearings that will take place. Those are very specific in subject matter. And then, once we get through those public hearings, we will have the usual public comment for the city council meeting. So I may be asking for clarification for people who've submitted cards. Some people have submitted cards on the public hearing comment card. Some have submitted regular public comments. Some of them look like they might actually be for the public hearing, so forgive me if I backtrack to ask you to clarify what you're speaking on. So our first one, conducting a joint public hearing with the Jersey Village Planning and Zoning Commission for the purpose of receiving oral comments from any interested persons concerning the request of Senate Avenue Pharmacy LLC through its owner Laura Smith Williams for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a retail pharmacy located at 7412 Senate Avenue, Jersey Village, Texas 77040, within the city limits in zoning District F. I now call to order this joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:06 PM. Everyone desiring to speak should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker will be given five minutes to present information concerning the request of Senate Avenue Pharmacy LLC through its owner Laura Smith Williams for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a retail pharmacy located at 7412 Senate Avenue, Jersey Village, Texas 77040, within the city limits in zoning District F. I do not currently have any public comment cards on this particular subject matter. James, you have one? Oh, you didn't put a subject matter.
Excuse me, Mayor, before we move forward with the public comments for this public hearing, I want to put on the record that we do have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission present.
Thank you very much. That's very important. So we have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission present. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, James, I've got your card here with no subject, so whenever you're ready.
Sorry, I thought there was one public hearing. My bad. People who are willing to comment on these, this location was actually the site of a highly contested applicant not long ago. Because there was a new applicant, I did a little bit of research into this, and I just wanted to say that I strongly support this. After looking into it, the business is fantastic. It's exactly what we want here in Jersey Village. I'm very excited to see them come to be part of our family.
Short, sweet, and to the point. I like it. Thank you very much, James. Very much appreciate it. Again, I don't have any other comment cards that mention this particular subject, so I'm going to assume that that's accurate. So there being no one else desiring to speak, I now close this joint public hearing on the request of Senate Avenue Pharmacy LLC through its owner Laura Smith Williams for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a retail pharmacy located at 7412 Senate Avenue, Jersey Village, Texas 77040, within the city limits in zoning District F at 7:08 PM. That brings us to item E, City of Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District E1, receive the adopted fiscal year 2024-2025 budget from the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District. Lori Cootie, City Secretary and CCPD Secretary.
Yes, Mayor, this is just a housekeeping measures for the council to receive the adopted budget for '24-'25 that was adopted by the Crime Control District.
Okay, so it doesn't require any action on our part?
No action.
Okay, so received. We'll move on to item E2, conduct a public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. I now call to order this public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present it to the city secretary. The purpose of today's hearings is to give all interested parties the right to appear and be heard concerning the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. Chief Keel could not be here, but he did send someone from the department to speak, and so I would call upon him to summarize the subject of this public hearing.
This item is to consider the adoption of the Crime Control Prevention District for 2024 to 2025. The proposed budget is as follows. Revenues, revenues is $2,350,000 with an interest of $240,000 for a total revenue of $2,590,000. The expenditures planned are wearing apparel, $20,464, crime prevention supplies at $9,000, books and periodicals at $5,618, tools and equipment at $8,000, radar and radar equipment at $26,329, software at $21,700, miscellaneous equipment at $3,300, lab tests at $2,400, communications at $8,000, rental of equipment at $18,500, travel and training at $26,250, maintenance agreements at $239,000, personnel at $1,928,959, administrative at $25,900, automobile liability insurance at $23,340, technology user fees at $31,240, equipment purchase contribution at $191,650 for a total expenditure of $2,590,000. It is my recommendation to approve Resolution 2024 to 25 for the Jersey Village Crime Control District.
Great, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I can just make a quick comment out about this, but we are aware that the live stream is not working. IT is working on getting that up, but we are still capturing the audio at least, and we believe the video as well, so we'll publish that later on. I just want to let everybody know.
Great, thank you very much. So I do not have a card on this specific public hearing. I assume that is accurate, that there's no one willing to speak or no one wishing to speak on this particular public hearing. Therefore, there being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing of the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's adopted budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Which brings us to item E3, consider resolution number 2024-53, adopting the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's budget for fiscal year 2024-2025.
I move to approve resolution 2024-53, right? Did I have that right?
Yes, 53.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst council? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That now brings us to Section F for the City of Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District. Item F1, receive the adopted fiscal year 2024-2025 budget from the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District. So received. Well, it brings us down to item F2, conduct a public hearing on the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Service District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. I now call to order this public hearing on the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District's budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present it to the city secretary. The purpose of today's hearing is to give all interested parties the right to appear and be heard concerning the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. I would now like to request Fire Chief Mark Bits to summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to consider the adoption of the Fire Control District and Emergency Medical Services 2024-2025 proposed budget, which was presented earlier to the Board of Directors and approved by that board. As mentioned in that meeting, in Packet Exhibit A shows the proposed budget as follows. Revenues, $2,350,000. Interest earned, $125,000 for a total of $2,475,000 in revenue. The expenditures we plan, wearing apparel, $104,212, fire prevention supplies, $2,900, software maintenance, $65,000, radio usage fees, $15,000, travel and training, $20,000, personnel, $1,463,000 and 850 cents, administrative, $25,650, technology user fee, $116,510, equipment user fee, $661,878 for total expenditures of $2,475,000. It is a recommendation to approve resolution 2024-54, the City of Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Service District's 2024-2025 budget.
Great, thank you, Chief. I do not have any comment cards regarding this public hearing. Was there anyone who wished to speak on this subject? Okay. There being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing on the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Service District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025. That brings us to item F3, consider resolution number 2024-54, adopting the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Service District's budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Council has the budget. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that both with this and the crime control budget, we went through these with both the fire department and the police department on Friday during the budget meeting. So the fact that we may make a motion and vote on it rather quickly does not mean that it had not been thoroughly reviewed and discussed prior.
Thank you. That is a very important point. We went over this with a fine-toothed comb on Friday, so yes, it might appear otherwise to anyone else who is only seeing this.
And with that, I will move to approve resolution 2024-54.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst council on this? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to Section G, fiscal 2024-2025 municipal budget items. Item 1, conduct a public hearing on the City of Jersey Village municipal budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. I now call to order this public hearing on the City of Jersey Village proposed municipal budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present it to the city secretary. The purpose of today's hearing is to give all interested parties the right to appear and be heard concerning the City of Jersey Village proposed municipal budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. I do have one public comment card that just says budget, Bill, were you wanting to speak on this? Or were you want?
Bill Edwards, 16001 Jersey. It's my understanding, and I really appreciate the fact that you guys spent all Friday hammering on this thing for the final budget review. But I get a little tired of seeing the city water the Esplanade in the middle of a two-inch rainstorm. Obviously, you're not running any controls that way. And having spent 40-plus years in the oil patch, I'd like to know if you all have considered cutting staff, especially the administrative staff. I understand emergency services should be maintained. I know that the oil industry, we constantly were laying people off, sometimes bringing them back when they were necessary, and we had salaries cut. I'm curious if you all went through the same routine as we do in industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just to clarify, Austin, there is at least one position that is not going to be filled, correct or two?
We have two right now that are being held open because of the current state of the budget.
So yes, that is definitely a consideration. Obviously, you want to avoid layoffs where possible, but certainly in a situation where you have openings that you just choose not to fill. I know, and again, I'm also in the oil industry, and that's usually our first step is to do that. So that's something we've certainly done, in addition to a lot of other things. So thank you very much. I don't have any other public comment cards on this particular part of the... Yes, sir, did you fill out a public comment card?
I filled out a comment card. I'm not sure if I filled out the right one, and maybe this isn't the right time to talk about it, but...
What's your name, sir?
Michael Torrigian.
Okay, and you're wanting to talk about planning priorities?
Yeah, and the budget, what we're spending are, you know...
Okay. If you want to speak now, instead of at the regular public comment period, then you can, as long as it's specifically germane to the budget.
It's germane, yes, it is.
Okay. And it's Michael Torgan?
Torrigian.
Torrigian, Torrigian.
And I'm at 8325 at Gill Street. Mike, I guess, one I want to say, I think you guys did a great job in getting the trash done and all that this year, or, you know, from this last storm. It's fantastic, and it was really nice to see so many people in the community. By Monday afternoon, the storm had barely passed, and I would tell you probably 80% of all the stuff you picked up today was sitting on the curb Monday afternoon. I was driving around, and it was just, I was amazed at how many people had already collected the storm damage. My concern is on the budget and budget priorities is I noticed that there was a million-dollar expenditure for the refurbishment of the fields and the pool. Is that, that's what I wanted to talk about. Is this the appropriate time?
Yes, it would be the appropriate time.
Okay. So, and maybe I'm just reading too much into something, but I thought that after the bond measures we had, where the huge expenditures on the pool and the fields and all that were pretty soundly defeated in comparison. It looked like the community, I was of like-minded with the community, where we wanted to spend money on the city and on the sewers, but there was a question about, do we really need to spend a million dollars on the, on fields and pool? Some of that may be necessary, but it seemed like we were expanding the use of the fields and what they'd be used for, and I don't have a clear understanding of who has access to those, is a revenue generated. It's kind of like when we drilled down on the pools and on the big pool structure, it looked like there was an average, if I remember correctly, I'm doing this from memory, so I apologize if I'm off, but I believe there's an average of six people a day who'd use the pool while it's open. That's what I got from looking at how many people paid to use the pool throughout the season, dividing it by the number of days that was open. So it was a very low number, which is one of the reasons I was not in favor of spending a huge amount of money on the pool. In the emails, I emailed council over the weekend just about some drainage issues and things like that, that were not apparently included in the bond issue. So specifically, on Smith Street, there's no drainage at all, except for two storm sewers at each end, in each cul-de-sac at the end of Smith, and there was a flooding issue on the brief storm we had after the hurricane. And I believe, Bobby, you told me that the bond money that was voted on had to be specifically used for the items spelled out in the bond. So it raised a couple of questions. Who determined what was, what we needed in the bond money, where it needed to be spent? And then, if we were going to spend a million dollars on the, on this field, would that not be better spent on fixing some of the drainage issues? I know you guys have done a fantastic job on reducing the flood situation in Jersey Village, and that just seems like that falls kind of in line. And honestly, I never even noticed. I live on the Gill Street, which is affected by that, but we don't flood that far up. I was just surprised, and it wasn't until that lady, one of the residents sent out a, on Facebook, hey, someone come help me. The storm sewers are clogged and we're flooding, that there were only storm sewers at the end of the street. So everything flows down that street. So I'm just kind of concerned about how we're allocating funds to, again, a field that I don't know how much use it's going to get, and/or whether or not that money would be better served providing and fixing the basic services that the residents and owners rely upon before we do that. That was my... That was my comment.
Great, thank you, sir. And I'll just say, certainly, this is something, if you want to give me a call sometime, if you look at any of the mayor's newsletters, my phone number's right there on it, we can have a very long detailed discussion on sort of how a lot of the priorities are set out, because you've kind of delved into what is a huge philosophical debate on funding for city government. So, I won't extend what's going to be already a very long meeting with all of that, only to say that all of these things are generally based off of, when you're talking about what streets get what, it's usually age, or condition is the biggest thing. As far as if streets are more important than parks, shouldn't we put all of our money first towards streets before we put any money towards parks? I think if you talk to people, you would get a lot of varied opinions on things, and they would probably, you would find a majority of people would advocate for a more diversified approach, that you can do a little bit of everything going forward. But again, that's something we can discuss in a lot more detail and really get into the minutia on that stuff, you know, to really discuss it, but that just gives you kind of a 30,000-foot view.
I guess my, my thought is, I've got the toilet overflowing and the bathroom, and I'm worried about watering the flower bed. And I just want to make sure that we're prioritizing taking care of residents' basic needs before we do the things that would be nice to happen.
Sure, and like I said, we can discuss it in more detail, but just the, my response would be, we can do both. So, the, I do not have any other comment cards on this particular public hearing. So, with that, there being no one else desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing on the City of Jersey Village Proposed Municipal Budget for the Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Let's see, that now brings us to item G2, consider Resolution Number 2024-55, electing to postpone the final budget vote on the 2024-2025 municipal budget until August 19th, 2024. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, this just simply postpones the final vote, it's an action that we have to take tonight.
Okay, great. Discussion amongst council on this item? All right, do we have a, there is a resolution that we need to vote on, correct, yeah, so...
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-55, postponing the final budget vote until August 19th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item G3, consider Resolution Number 2024-56, setting the maximum proposed ad valorem tax rate, setting the date for the public hearing on tax increase, and setting the date city council will adopt the fiscal year 2024-2025 ad valorem tax rate. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, tonight we have the maximum proposed ad valorem tax rate, this is not the tax rate that the council will adopt coming up in August, but this is just the maximum. This is something we have to do based upon the legislative changes from a few years ago, the final tax rate would be adopted next month, or in front of council for possible action next month.
All right, great, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item?
This is maximum.
This is the maximum.
This is not the tax rate.
It could still be lower. She just got here. Okay, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion at this, well, actually, let's see, so, I've got a script, so let me go through that first. To approve Resolution Number 2024-56, setting the maximum proposed ad valorem tax rate, setting the date for the public hearing on tax increase, and setting the date city council will adopt the fiscal year 2024-2025 ad valorem tax rate, I would entertain a motion at this time, and there will be a roll call vote.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2024-56.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will now call upon each council member by name to signify, to take the record vote. Once your name is called, answer aye to signify your approval of the motion, or nay to signify your disapproval. Councilmember Wasson, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Shepherd, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchum, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Rossi, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember McCray, state your vote.
Aye.
Let the record, oh, hold on, the motion carries unanimously, and so therefore, we will move on, on our agenda. Oh, do we have additional?
Thank you. And Mayor, before we move on, just to make sure the public's clear, that the hearing for the tax rate will be on August 19th, along with the budget hearing.
Great, thank you. Okay, now, those are all of the public hearings, we are moving on to the regular old public comment period. So, citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject, and may only respond with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. The first comment card I have is from John Hacker.
Responders, city council, good evening, thank you for everything you do. John Hacker, 16414 Cornwall Street. Not sure if you've considered any of this, or if you're doing anything like this at the time, but I'd like to propose something that, in regards to the power outages, I know we had a lot of trees on some of our overhead wires. We do have that coming into the city, and for those who have those, I don't know how much, it just seems like every time there's power outage, whether it's a storm, or just the middle of a summer day, a spring day, or in the middle of the winter, it's a tree on a wire somewhere, or it's gotten wet from a windy day from the rain. So, I'm proposing it, you put people together, put feet on the street, go out there, walk the lines of the neighborhood, take addresses, get some data that you can supply Center Point with, say, these are the streets, these are the addresses, let the citizens know, we're going to be doing this, we're coming into your yard, we need access. It's good for everybody here, and everybody probably outside the city, too. I don't know how much the grids go past our boundaries, but if we're not, if we're not in total compliance with this, it's just going to keep happening. We just had a Cat 1 come through, and the backside of that eye, which was right over us, kind of broke up. I was cleaning my yard up at four o'clock in the afternoon, instead of the rest of the storm. We got two, or three, or four come at us, God help all of us. So, I say that, put the feet on the street, whoever it is, committee, city, council, whatever it takes, walk every overhead line, street, get the data, get the addresses, turn in to Center Point, give them, put it, put the ball in their court now, give them something to work with, come in here, and it may take a while, it's probably going to, but at least they have something to go by for in the future, for storms, for these blowy windy days which we get. It's, it's not going away, it's going to keep happening, but it's going to make things easier in the long run, so, I would hope to see something going forward on this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. In fact, I'm sure we're to get this, into this in more detail during the city manager report, but I know that that is the, that's step one, when these things happen, is that we collect that information and pass it along to Center Point Energy. We usually collectively gather that information from people, they usually reach out and provide that information very quickly. That's usually not the, that's usually not the part that slows things down, it's Center Point having to look at equipment and lines, and where they have to get up there and investigate, that's what slows things down much more. A tree on a line's pretty easy to spot, so, but you raise a good point, that is absolutely step number one. Let's see, the next public comment card I have is from Rick Faircloth.
Thank you, I'm Rick Faircloth, 1601 Lakeview. I sat in on a few of the pool bond committee activities. I know you're going to have a report from the city manager tonight on their activities. I know at the last meeting, there were a lot of people there, they were very surprised that, that the discussion leant towards two pools, not one, a $10 million dollar project. We had a bond election last year for a much bigger facility, closer to $20 million, was not successful. As I made comments online, I think that the, like the school district does, anybody over 65 is exempt from any bond, bond impact on their taxes, and I think the city needs to consider that at this time. I'm sure there's some other folks that are going to speak about this tonight, but it appears that the majority of that group wants to spend that money, and I just think that we should have done a better job to find out just, what does it take to repair it? There's others around this area that have pools a lot older than ours, and they're still in operation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick. The next comment card I have is from Ashley Holland.
Hi, Ashley Holland, 8642 Wyndham Village Drive. I've lived here for six years, my husband grew up here, he was on the JV Stars, my kids are both on the JV Stars, and we are totally for the pool. My husband attended the pool bond meetings, and we, I just wanted to come up and say that, you know, we are in support of everything for the pool, we think it's great for the city, we think it's great for the kids and the community, and it helps everyone out. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next comment card I have is from Beverly Peterson.
Beverly Peterson, 16522 Cornwall. I'm on the 2024 Bond Committee. However, I am here before you right now as a citizen, I do not represent the Bond Committee at this point. At some point in the future, we are going to have a new pool. Our pool is old. And with that in mind, I'd like to take a moment to propose a project timeline for a new pool, whenever that happens. I'll start with what George, he was the, he was the guy from Councilman Hunsacker that the city hired, so city's person, said about the timeline and about our pool. So, I'm going to quote George right now, and George basically said, for a replacement, which is 50 years old, we need to replace our pool. For a replacement, you want at least 10 months to a year for completion. Typically in Texas, you close the pool a little early one season, and you start construction, and hopefully by June of the next season, you have your pool. So, you might have two shorter seasons, but you're not going to lose a whole season. We have a pool, it's sitting there. It's not, it's just, it's a program we want to keep going. He also said that the design portion of a pool takes three months. So, the other thing I want to say that, in what George said, he said, currently, our pool needs to address the ADA accessibility, which we did by adding two chair lifts. He said also the baby pool had a lot of other problems, so we solved that problem by closing down the baby pool, so that's gone. And he basically said, the main pool, well, he didn't basically, he said, the main pool turnover rate of 13 hours is grandfathered in. He said the existing pool should be serviceable. Do we need to service it? Yes. Is it going to cost some money? Yes. But that's no different than paying for a one-day egg hunt, or a one-day fall frolic, or a one-day winter wonderland. This is something that's a goodwill toward the citizens of Jersey Village, to have a pool. So, what I would say to, when we get our new pool, because at some point we will, I would say that if you take this information, you can conclude that if we have a bond election in November, and it takes three months to design a pool, if it takes two months to get bids, and it takes one month to secure your funding, then you're roughly looking at five to six months before you can actually start construction. So, I would like to suggest, instead of construction beginning in May of 2025, you allow us to have a shortened 2025 season in the pool, and begin construction in August of 2025. You still have plenty of time, you'll still have eight to nine months, the pool will be ready by April of 2026. So, we can still use this pool, yes, you will have to spend some money on it, just like you do on other things, just like you're going to have to do in the future to maintain this new pool. So, we have a new pool, but it's within code, and it's safe, and it's manageable, and it's serviceable. So, I would say that this two- to three-month pause in the project would allow swim team to swim in their own pool. It would allow the city to keep their lifeguards hired, it would allow the aerobics and teaching our children how to swim, with all the swim classes that go on there. So, with this timeline, we won't lose the momentum of having our pool closed for a whole season. So, what you're looking at is the possibility of losing lifeguards to other pools, swim team kids, well, I'm just going to go do something else now, aerobics, find another pool to work in, parents finding other places for their kids to take swimming lessons. So, I would urge you to consider this timeline, because it is truly a win-win, a win for the city, a win for all the people, a win for all the kids, a win for you, it's just a win-win.
Great, thank you. The next comment card I have is from James Singleton.
Actually, not here about the pool. So, I have a topic that I thought was really important to share. As I drove down Wall Street, homes are flooded, there's sheet rock and carpet, grandma's coffee table, priceless photos stacked on the curb along Jersey, Wall Street, Lakeview, many other Jersey Village streets. It was a trying time in Jersey Village, this was the Tax Day Flood of April 2016. Sadly, not a new feeling to those that were here during 1998, 2001, 2002, 2001, 2002, I had just joined Public Safety, and it was my first disaster, and I remember being shocked. In 2016, inside the Tax Day Flood EOC, city manager Mike Castro and Justin, Mayor Justin Ray began writing what would become the Request for Proposal for the Long-Term Flood Recovery Plan. The Long-Term Flood Recovery Plan went through its process and was published in August of 2017. It was four months after Jersey Village named Austin Bleese City Manager. The plan is full of technical jargon, calculations, and science, if you enjoy white papers or numbers-driven nonfiction, this 144-page document is for you. This plan did have some criticism as a waste of funds, but the plan cost $620,917 from the general fund. The plan was provided as a roadmap for improvements and data to obtain future funding. One of those projects was the golf course berm and Wall Street improvements. This project cost $8,964,000. 100% of that was funded through grant funds through federal and state programs, thank you to Austin Bleese. How does this project work? As floodwaters come in, and Wall Street neighborhood fills up in the street, and then flows into the E127 bayou between Wall Street and DeLoser, the bayou starts to fill, and that flow stops. As this flow stops and builds up in the street, a pump moves this water from Carlsbad and Wall Street to the golf course. As the bayou begins to lower, that water is later discharged into the bayou. The Long-Term Flood Recovery Study ran multiple storm scenarios and found that every storm, except a 500-year event, was contained fully within the golf course berm. Based on that modeling, this saves the Jersey Village taxpayers $757,000 every 100-year storm, such as Barrow. During Barrow, the pump ran multiple times, the rain was spread out across a 10-hour time period, and at its hardest, we saw two inches in a single hour. At this rate, we can mitigate the water and prevent flooding. We're not out of the woods. We're not out of the woods yet. This past Friday would bring 2.44 inches of water in 15 minutes. Though all of this rain, the golf course only filled to roughly, please, roughly 40% of its capacity. I heard one resident comment that it was within a foot of the top of the berm. In reviewing the July 2018 design packet, the golf course can store 185 acre-feet of water. The last foot of that berm holds 105 acre-feet of storage capacity. That's 60% of the storage that we didn't touch. I now, I know that some experienced water in their homes during the storm. I realize that we are not without victims, but I want to thank those that reached out to all of their neighbors during this time and helped others get through the storm. If you have something outstanding, call me. My phone number's everywhere. I'm on Facebook. But I wanted to highlight this moment, because this is the culmination of many years of hard work by staff and community leaders. I'm sure those that initially suggested the berm in 2003 are thankful for its existence 20 years later. So in the end, my last few moments, I'm going to name: City Manager Austin Blis, former City Manager Mike Castro, Mayor Bobby Brown, sorry, Mayor Bobby Warren, former Mayor Justin Ray, former Mayor Andrew Mitchum, Councilmember Sherri Shepherd, Councilmember Drew Wasson, Councilmember Michelle Mitchum, former Councilmember Greg Holden, former Councilmember Gary Wubenhorst, Assistant City Manager Robert Bassford, City Secretary Lori Cootie, Finance Director Isabel Cato, and the Golf Pro Matt Jones are all involved in that project. It was a fantastic thing, and undoubtedly, even though all the response we did to the storm, this is the single most important response to Barrow.
Thank you, James. And of course, you forgot one more. Former Councilmember James Singleton. No, thank you. That, we're confident that there were quite a few homes saved because of that, that system. The final comment card I have is from Kimberly Anow.
My name is Kimberly Anow, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 34th installment, Jersey Village could have been a big part of 2001's pop culture if we had been featured in Rush Hour 290, filmed the Tropical Storm Edition of Survivor, Jersey Village, and sung about in Family Affair by Mary J. Blige, because there were so many dedicated families that choose to live and thrive here. Approval was unanimous for the inter-local agreement with Harris County Flood Control District to lease 43 acres for recreational purposes at the water detention area. It's a nice spot for the July 4 fireworks also. Ordinance 01-09 amended Section 6.8 to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the golf course. The city manager's monthly report would also include details such as golf course rounds played. A work session concluded to maintain the course as well-conditioned, challenging, and aesthetically appealing. Jersey Village High School requested painting the Falcon on the new Solomon Water Storage Tank. Ordinance 01-11 was amended to prohibit the operation of motor vehicles on park and recreation property. Mayor Schneider proclaimed April 28 as Arbor Day to protect trees and woodlands for future generations. Flooding from Tropical Storm Allison on June 9 began several discussions, such as an early warning alarm system of possible flooding, and citizens' comments about detention ponds and subsidence problems. Councilmembers congratulated the police and fire departments' performance during the flood emergency, noted flooding problems to be a high priority, and that residents' correspondence to be signed by the senders. It was the consensus of council to delay construction on the new city hall in favor of the new fire station. Prudential's program, Helping Hands, presented a check for $1,000 in matching funds to assist the fire department to purchase a defibrillator for the ambulance. A person spoke on Code Enforcement Services during the specified time of, for the Crime Control and Prevention District. Resident A.J. Wadaki stated his support of council that citizens seem to be misinformed, property owners need to look at their own property appraisals, that this is one of the fastest subsiding areas in Harris County, the golf course purchase was a major city benefit, and a reduction in taxes will only decrease city services. There was a unanimous vote of Resolution 01-9 for city council's pledge to maintain continued support of the fire and police departments on behalf of the community. Councilmember Hamley moved to appoint Bill Smith, Charles Daniels, Eugene Fowler, Bob Biggs, A.J. Wadaki, Bill Carey, and William McCray to the Golf Course Advisory Committee with the unanimous vote. A homeowner on Lakeview stated appreciation of council, that streets were in need of repair, and residents should realize that they have to pay for the services provided. Councilmembers commented on the successful Holiday in the Park Star membership program at the golf course to reduce town hall meetings to four, the Christmas tree recycling program, JVFD's visits from Santa, and how important it is to have fact sheets on the bond election to be included in the January issue of the Star. This past Friday, July 12, was the city budget meeting. One dedicated homeowner gave citizens' comments, and one homeowner observed the entire meeting. Residents attending the variety of open meetings can help to understand how our city government functions. They are on the record and scheduled on the city's website. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Those are all the citizen comments cards. So we are moving on to the city manager's report. Austin Blis.
Mayor and councilors, just a couple of things to add into the city manager's report that is not already there. Late last month, we received word that our request for a million dollars in congressional community project funding from Congressman Hunt's office was included in the budget proposal. That still has to go through the congressional approval process, but that million dollars would go to water and sewer pipes throughout the community. We've had a lot of questions about the berm and how much water we pumped there. We believe we pumped somewhere between 3 and 3.7 million gallons of water into the berm area. There's still a lot of capacity left, roughly 34 million gallons or so is what that berm can hold. So obviously, rain fell on the berm, or in the golf course area and everything else, so we still had a lot of water capacity left, but we did pump quite a bit and undoubtedly saved homes. We encourage residents to check out the video that we put out there and the pictures as well, and we'll certainly put all that up on our website. And I believe, right now, there may be six homes still without power in Jersey Village, but CenterPoint, last I spoke with them about two-ish hours ago, they said they'd all be back on by about 8:00 or 8:30. So hopefully soon, the last of everybody in Jersey Village has power restored.
Great. Questions from council for the city manager?
We did preemptively pump down the golf course lakes and, prior to the storm as well, correct?
Correct. Before the storm, we always drain the lakes, and then we always pump down the retention pond as well.
I just, I did want to make a comment. Like Austin said, if you didn't get a chance to go look at that drone footage that was put out by, I believe, Robert, it was insane how many, how many houses we have saved. I asked Austin in one of our meetings if he could estimate how many houses we saved from, from the damage, and it's hard, like he said, it was hard to put a round number on it, but 3.7 million gallons. I mean, that is a lot of memories, houses, hard work, displacement, that our city was able to save, and I'm really, really proud of all the hard work that our past council members and, and team has done.
Not only that, but the golf course was back open on Wednesday.
Which was a few days earlier than the competition, when a lot of the courses around here were not open up until about Sunday or today even.
And when I talked to some of my fellow friends who are not in Jersey Village, the speed of clearing our trees and limbs, I know one of my street, Alcopoco was one of the big trees that fell across, and within an hour of the storm clearing, I had public works on my street and, and five police officers. Like, that is not even something that you would see in any other city. So the amount of community that came together to just clear and get us up and running quickly is admirable.
Austin, we touched very briefly on the question about the causes of some of the outages around here. I know, obviously, trees are always a big concern. In your discussions with CenterPoint, have they revealed to you kind of what the major causes were?
So the two, two big causes, Jersey Village is on a couple of different sections of the grid. Two of the big causes, especially for areas over on this side, one was, both of them were terminal poles that had fuses knocked out that needed to be replaced or fixed. That was the biggest thing, and after those came on, there were more individualized issues with transformers or fuses and those types of things. A portion of, like Wyndham Village, that's on the grid that connects north into Winchester Country, there was a few issues going into that substation that feeds that section, which was the big, big issue there. But the bulk of the issue after the two main terminal poles was repaired was, fuses are terminal issue, or fuses in terminals, yeah.
Can we get clarification of what a terminal pole is?
To the best of my knowledge, it's the main one where all the wires come through.
Who's responsible for putting those up there? Who's responsible for putting those together?
CenterPoint?
May I comment real quick about?
You're more than welcome to reach out to us after the meeting, but citizen comment is the only time really available for that.
And also, just to clarify, or piggyback off your question, who is responsible for maintaining them? Is that also CenterPoint?
That is also CenterPoint. And I will also note that I've already got it on my calendar for the first week of August with our contact at CenterPoint to talk with him about our grid, about the issues that we saw, about what we can do to strengthen it, harden it. We've done a lot for flood mitigation over the last few years, and I think it is a great opportunity for us right now to look at what we can do about our electrical grid. We're a very small piece of that, and CenterPoint obviously is the larger player, but if there's things that we can do with CenterPoint to strengthen our grid and harden that, become more resilient in that way, I think that's something that we definitely want to do. I think that, as a city, we want to do that, and that's one of the first conversations that we're going to have. It's already on the calendar for the first week of August, and I'm excited to tackle that challenge.
Any other questions from council for the city manager? No? Okay, then we will move along to the consent agenda. Does a member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration on the regular agenda?
I'd like to remove item number four.
Okay, item number four will be considered during the regular agenda. Any other items? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the modified consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda with the exclusion of J4.
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, any further discussion? See none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The modified consent agenda passes unanimously. We will consider at the top of the regular agenda what was previously item J4, discuss and take appropriate action concerning the progress being made by the owners of the property located at 15830 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, to correct the substandard structure at this location. Misha Johnson, Community Development Manager.
Good evening, mayor and council. This has been on the agenda consecutively since we declared this a substandard structure. We did say that they are still in compliance due to, basically, all the things that have been happening, as far as, they just can't catch a break. Before this was a tornado, and then it was this. And so, they have been doing work when they get the chance to do work over there. They've been responding every time there's a fence down or anything like that, but they just have not had the working days to, to get this up.
Great. Any questions from council?
But there is permits that have been submitted and approved, is that correct? For work? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, was there a question down here? Sorry.
It's more just an observation. So, you know, from my understanding, you know, you can pull a permit, but how long is it for a permit to expire, Austin?
90 or 120?
180 days.
180 days.
And, again, if I'm reading what we've done here correctly with what we're allowed to do, I understand there's limits to what we're allowed, can they not just continuously pull a permit, and this is no longer a substandard structure, and we continue to look at that for, in perpetuity?
So, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, I imply from the way that this was written that, once they do get to that 100 days, that would trigger them to not be in compliance with what you guys actually passed for the substandard structure.
Right, so the, so the point of a substandard structure, any kind of action, is to abate the health and safety issue that underlies the substandard issue. So, this is not about a facade improvement or anything like that. This is about addressing the underlying issue. And so if the permit that they pulled addresses the underlying issue, then that is fine. Theoretically, if they're going to keep pulling permits, the issue will continue, and then you can start another substandard action on that, on the health and safety issue that would still remain on the property. But as long as they're within the terms of the order that you, as a council, made originally, then they're fine. If that means that standard procedure, if they have a six-month permit going, then they're within the, it sounds like they're within the order and taking, taking action to resolve the health and safety issue.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? No? Okay, thank you so much.
We'd just like to see it move a little faster.
Thank you. Okay. There's no action to be taken on that item, so we are going to move on to item K1. Consider Resolution Number 2024-59, appointing members to the 2024 Charter Review Commission. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so Section 9.14 of the city's Home Rule Charter calls for the appointment of a Charter Review Commission every four years, beginning in July of 1996. The last Charter Review Commission was appointed by council in July of 2020, and council must appoint a commission for 2024. To comply with this provision, council must appoint a Charter Review Commission to review the city charter for possible amendments. The Charter Review Commission must consist of seven members and three alternate members. In the past, the council did serve in those alternate positions, but also, there was the last one in 2020, council decided to just go ahead in, because of the interest of the residents, to fill those alternate positions with resident appointments. The term of the service of the Charter Review Commission is six months, and this can be extended by city council. And in order to prepare for this item, I published in the JV Star, May, June, and July, and I also posted a notice on the city website. And we do have quite a few people who are very interested in serving on this commission. Those applications were included in the packet, and this item is to go through those applications and see who you want to appoint to serve on the 2024 Charter Review Commission.
Thank you. I see 18 applicants.
18 applicants.
That's, I don't know that I've ever seen 18 applications for anything. Okay. How does council want to start on this?
The only comment I would like to make is, I think there's some value in some repeat people who were on the committee last time to be on the committee again, just for flow and dynamics and history. So I just wanted to say that I think there might be some value in some of the people who have applied to return again for another's.
I tend to agree on that. I think, I know that I tend to agree. I think, I know at least the last time that we did this, there was a tendency to have a mix both of having some good institutional knowledge and then also having some perspective from some fresh faces, so to speak. I will say, just as a, again, going from the institutional standpoint, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, I think you were actually on the original committee that drafted the charter. Is that right?
No, I've been on since 1986.
I'd say, I'd say that qualifies as institutional knowledge. So, to me, Rick was kind of my number-one pick from that group. No offense to anyone else, but I think that's, those are credentials that are hard to beat. So...
Yeah. If I'm picking, backing off the repeat members, I also think Denise Renaud and Eric Robertson, they've been on the committee before. I think having them as well. I'm opinionated, so I'll keep going. The other person that I just feel would be missed to not include in this committee is Jeff Butler. He has a master's in urban planning, and if you have the chance to talk to him, he's very wise in city dynamics and community and overall development.
No, I can't, oh, God, sorry. Can I see, or can somebody direct me where, I want to see, we just appointed people to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Can I see that list? Because I want to make sure we're not completely, oh, wait, Austin's going to grab it for me.
Oh, I got it for you. Jeff Butler, Tom Eustace, Lynn Singleton, Joseph Paul, Gregory Nash, Ryan Trostad, Steve Gill.
Thank you. I would like to suggest Simon Hughes.
I was just about to say the same thing.
For this. He's a lawyer. This, and I don't mean any offense to lawyers or to Charter Review. I mean, I get it. But there's nothing, I don't see this as overly exciting. Do you know what I mean? Like, it takes a lot of reading. Like, it's not, it's legal reading. I apologize. I'm tired. But it's a lot of, it's a lot of in-depth reading, and it takes somebody that is used to being able to read and pay attention to detail and to understand what that means. Because as Justin here knows, that apparently lawyers read things differently than other people. So, I just think that, I think that would be useful.
I also think that he'll be able to see a little bit ahead, the road ahead, maybe have some answers that, to questions that people haven't asked yet.
I'm a yes to Simon, so that seems like another three yeses.
I think, I mean, the sort of shade thrown at lawyers aside, I tend, I tend to, I tend to agree, yes. This is definitely a situation, I mean, we are talking about what is, in essence, the constitution of our city. So, I do think that it's a, you know, it's a good idea to have a sense of sort of how words impact things when they're changed. So, that's definitely an important thing.
One of the things about the committee, I feel like the voice from above here, one of the things about the committee is, not only is it what additions might we want to make to the charter, but what, what is, I'll use the phrase outdated, but what might be helpful to remove because it's not applicable today, or can be synthesized, or consolidated, or it's somehow repeating itself elsewhere, right? And we want the charter to be as clean and crisp and as good of a guidance for us today as it could be 10, 20, 30, 50 years from now.
I also think having a mix of people who have lived here for a long time and some people who are relatively new to the neighborhood has some value.
I was going to suggest Ashley Hart and Judy Tidwell.
Aren't, isn't Judy married to Eric? I just wanted, that's, to me, would be a little bit of a conflict.
I think I would choose Eric because he was on the last one, though I do love Judy. Just for the only, the consistency of marrying the, well, nice word, of joining the last charter in this charter together. How is council feeling about having at least a couple of them be from 2020's Charter Committee returning for some continuity?
Having been the chairman of the last review committee, I think is very valuable because there's history there, and you can understand why certain decisions were made and when they were made, so that you can make a more deformed, informed decision about whether or not it stays or is updated.
And I agree with Ashley Hart. I know you did say her name. Yeah.
I agree with Rick and Ashley.
As well.
And Denise.
You mentioned Denise.
So, I think we've got, oh, Ashley, I'll also add on that name. So, we've got at least three, if not four of us said yes to Ashley. And then for the return committee members, I'm hearing Eric Robertson, Denise Renaud, and Rick Faircloth as those three?
Yes. I'm good with that.
We've got five down, five to go. I'm not missing. Rick, Simon, Ashley, Eric, Denise.
I didn't know if anybody else seconded or thirded my, Jeff.
Well, I think that the concern was expressed about having somebody serve on multiple committees. I know we've generally tried to spread things out a little bit. I mean, obviously, I like Jeff. He's a great guy, but the comprehensive planning made more sense because he's an urban planner.
I have a question. Let me think about how I'm going to ask this question. Hold on.
What about Sean Anger?
I'm affirming yes there.
Yes.
About to suggest that.
I think there is somebody on this list who loves this city. I think we'll add, I think that she could add something to the group. There's a name here, Beatrice Menendez. She has a history in the city. She loves this city. I think that she'll work well with the names that are already down.
Beatrice isn't serving on any committees right now, right? Any other committees?
I don't believe so.
The name doesn't ring a bell to me. I don't think so.
Could be on the application.
Just as, I mean, I will say, William Walker, I don't know him personally. I just noticed from his credentials, occupation VP and Chief Financial Officer, LBJ Hospital. That's a, you know, if you're talking about Charter Review Committee, I think having the ability to really look at big picture, 30,000-foot view is a, and, you know, from an executive position at a hospital, that's probably a skill set that's used quite often.
What about Steve Gill? I know he's an alternate on the...
How many are we at? I think I have... Can I get, can we read out the list of names we currently have, or the idea?
I was only highlighting it when at least three of us said yes to it.
The list that I have, Simon, Rick, Denise, Ashley, Eric, Sean, Beatrice, and William Walker.
So, those are eight. We need a total of 10. It would be seven main members and three alternates.
Drew, you have any input?
I was going to ask if Brian McCauley had been suggested. I've worked with him on JV Stars. I know he's volunteered in a lot of other, a variety of other issues, and probably could give some unique perspective.
He was suggesting Brian McCauley?
Yeah. I'll second Brian McCauley. And I don't know this person, but Eric Fulmer, just from reading the resume, he is new to JV. I don't know y'all, your all's thoughts and opinions on having somebody who's new to the neighborhood, if that's not a good move for this committee or not.
My concern would be, new is relative, but I think one year is kind of pushing it. In a neighborhood where people have lived here 40-plus years, people will see me as new. But, yeah, I think it helps to have at least a little bit of context of the city and kind of seeing how things have operated.
He's an, he's an alternate, though, if that makes a difference. I don't know.
And if it doesn't matter about Eric and Judith, I mean, if anybody's not concerned, I brought that up as a, just to make sure that we're all aware about them being husband and wife, but I don't know how everybody feels about that.
I mean, I'm very different than my husband, so it doesn't bother me. I feel like they're both very...
Just means I can carpool.
Yeah.
Save the environment.
He brought up that they both have young children. I don't know if that's something we should... Wasn't Bill Walker former JV Fire Department? Is that?
According to his application, yeah.
Is he not on the...
I have him on the list.
Right. Yeah. He is on the list.
Are we saying yes to William Walker or Bill Walker?
Yeah. I have, so this is the list I have so far that sounds like it's got some consensus. Rick Faircloth, Simon Hughes, Eric Robertson, Ashley Hart, Denise Renaud, Sean Anger, Beatrice Menendez, William Walker, Brian McCauley. So, I think we need one more. And then we need to decide which one of those are alternates in order.
I'm going to throw out Sharon, Sharon Barclay.
I'll second that. She's the OT, the occupational therapist.
That was Beatrice, I think. At this point, what are we at with the male-female split?
Well, we have a lot of women on council.
It's about 50/50.
I actually like that Sharon Barclay has extensive experience reviewing legal documents.
I'll second Sharon.
So, I count that as 10. So, we need to, we need to figure out which three people would be alternates.
And to your question, it's 60/40.
I thought it was seven and then three.
Yes. So, we have a 10 total here. We have to, I know, jet lag. It's okay.
Why don't we do the last three we suggested as the alternates? It seems like we had more opinions about the ones earlier on.
I was going to suggest that. So, I think that is the easiest.
That makes sense to me. Yeah. I'd say in that order, William Walker, Brian McCauley, Sharon Barclay, A1, A2, A3.
Sounds good.
And just, just to be clear, just with this committee, as it worked in the past, alternates are allowed to participate in the discussion and bring ideas to the table, just they're not allowed to vote unless another member's missing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So, just one last time to make sure that we've got this down for the purpose of a motion. I have, as the, as the primary members of the committee, or voting members of the committee, as it were, Rick Faircloth, Simon Hughes, Eric Robertson, Ashley Hart, Denise Renaud, Sean Anger, Beatrice Menendez, and then I have as alternate one, William Walker, alternate two, Brian McCauley, and alternate three, Sharon Barclay.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution number 2024-59, appointing Rick Faircloth, Denise Renaud, Simon Hughes, Ashley Hart, Eric Robertson, Sean Anger, Beatrice Menendez, and William Walker as A1, Brian McCauley as A2, and Sharon Barclay as A3.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Okay. That brings us to item K2. Consider resolution number 2024-60, accepting the proposal of group health benefits services and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with United Healthcare for medical, dental, vision, and OX for life insurance, AD&amp;D? I'm sure that'll be explained. And long-term disability, lowercase, Human Resource Manager.
Good evening. And before I get started, just want to let you know that we also have Julian from Hub, our benefits consultant, is here as well for any further questions. To remain competitive in employee group health benefits, the city recently solicited sealed proposals from qualified vendors for group health benefits for medical, dental, vision, life insurance, and long-term disability. Currently, the city is with Texas Health Pool for these services. However, due to concerns regarding the future of the health benefits pool and recent fluctuation in rates, the city opted to solicit sealed proposals from qualified vendors. Last year, a similar process was undertaken, resulting in a request for proposal for health benefit consultants and healthcare vendors prompted a similar concern regarding the Texas Health Benefit Pool stability. Despite challenges faced by the Texas Health, they offered a 13.35% rate decrease, which is contrasting with widespread rate increases for other pool members, raising questions about the pool's reliability. The request for proposal was submitted, submitted to vendors from our benefit consultant, Hub International. The following companies responded to the RFP, as you can see listed. Staff members in Hub International have reviewed the responses in accordance with the following requirements outlined in the RFP. We looked at similarity to current benefit package, proposed services, the wellness program, and... and of course, price and cost. Below are listed of the major changes between our current plan and also the proposed plan. So for health insurance, the deductible will go up to $5,000 slash $10,000 respectively for individual versus family coverage. Out-of-pocket will increase from four to $4,000 to $8,000. However, we will see decreases in our office visits, our specialty visits, our urgent care and rehab, and now it includes our ROSTI. And then our pharmacy co-pays have also decreased. You can see in the chart the percentages for each coverage, for each tier, for employees. For dental, our co-insurance will increase to 80%, which is, our rates will increase 2%. Vision, progressive, the only thing that's really changing for vision besides the company will be progressive lenses, lenses will be subject to a co-pay now. For group life and AD&amp;D, we have opted to increase the coverage from $25,000 to $50,000 max benefit for our employees. We will now also have an employee assistance program that was eliminated by Texas Health. And our rate will be guaranteed for three years, which is a really good benefit for us. Our long-term disability, we will now have a voluntary life as the option. We also decided to increase our monthly max to $10,000 for our employees, and this is also a three-year rate guarantee as well. Based upon the review of staff and Hub International, it is recommended that the proposal received from United Healthcare be accepted and that the city manager be authorized to negotiate the terms of agreement for health benefit services for medical, dental, vision, and then also the proposal from Oaks be accepted, and that the city manager be authorized to negotiate the terms and agreement for life insurance and long-term disability. The estimated savings from moving from Texas Health to United Healthcare and also Oaks is estimated at $250,370, which will be about a 14.79% decrease from, for the 2024/2025 fiscal year. This decrease includes cost for employee benefits enrollment system, Benefit Connector, Section 125, the FSA plan, and administrative cost of COBRA. On the chart below, you can see the combined financial results. Any questions?
So there's a decrease in cost?
Yeah, yeah, so overall, health insurance, including all costs, everything, it's gonna be about a 14.67% decrease. They gave us a bundle price for medical, dental, vision. Some things obviously went up, some things went down, but overall, we're gonna see about a 14.67% decrease overall plan, which is around, I think the final numbers was around $248,000 that we'll be saving for all plans combined.
And city employees will have adequate coverage?
Yes, so what we wanted to do is make sure that our plans didn't really change much as far as the coverage option, so we still want to continue to have a very rich plan for our employees. So it's still the open network, it's still a very large network. Employees should not see a huge, if any, at all, changes in their coverage, besides the, of course, deductibles and out-of-pockets is the only thing that really changed.
I see that you have the out-of-pocket difference in the non-network deductible. Is the typical deductible staying about the same?
No, the deductible is going up, $1,000 for individual and family coverage. So the deductible and the out-of-pocket will go up, but the different co-pays are going down.
What was the deductible?
Let me scroll up, I don't tell you wrong. So the deductible will increase to $5,000 for individual and $10,000 for family.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit of, this is my...
What was it before?
I have that right here. I can tell you.
So it was four and eight?
It's a $4,000 deductible?
No, that's the out-of-pocket. The out-of-pocket's $4,000 and $8,000. Our deductible is only changing for our non-network. So our deductible is $1,000 for individual, $2,000 for family, and then our out-of-pocket will be $4,000 for individual, $8,000 for out-of-pocket.
It was, the out-of-pocket was three and six. The deductible is staying the same.
$1,000. As someone who runs benefits all, all day and deals with healthcare and insurance all day, that deductible and out-of-network and the physician rates are phenomenal. Just putting that out there. I, that is awesome.
When we were talking during the budget hearing, or budget meeting on Friday, I kind of had to double-check the numbers. I was like, a decrease? We saved $250,000 on health insurance? It seemed almost like a typo, but there it is, yeah, and kept all the benefits pretty much the same.
Kudos, staff, kudos.
That's phenomenal, so job well done. That's, yeah. Probably won't see that again.
Fingers crossed.
But locking in the rates for three years helps as well. That's a huge one also.
It's a very big one that we had a decrease two years in a row, so.
Unless anyone else has got any other questions, I think that kind of says it all.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-60.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to Item K3, Consider Resolution 2024-61, Accepting the Recommendation of the Bond Committee and Directing the Next Steps for a Bond Election. Austin Blythe, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, the Bond Committee, which y'all appointed earlier this year, has come back with their recommendation. After having 10 meetings, public input, and utilizing the resources of Councilman Hunsanker and their pool assessment, the committee reviewed five pool concepts, which were presented and discussed in detail, and those are all in the council packet attached in Exhibit 8 of this discussion item. Discussions went back and forth discussing the pros and cons of each solution presented, and the committee debated between a Z-shaped pool priced in the $7 million range and a third concept estimated at $10.1 million. Value engineering and other things were discussed as well, along with pool amenities, such as slides, the heater, chiller, diving boards. Those prices are about 20, $25,000 to $300,000 max, if you have a tall two-slide tower. Highlighted, it was highlighted in that meeting that it represents about 3% of the total project. Upon the completion of the final meeting, the committee recommended, with five in favor and two against, recommended their concept here. It's discussed that there still needs to be some design manipulation when we actually get to that point for the final design options there. So the committee recommended to recommend the Concept 3 with a vote of five, four, and two against, but that price tag would be $10.1 million. So the resolution that is included in the meeting packet tonight will accept the recommendation of the committee, declare the committee's work complete, and the committee disbanded and direct staff to take the necessary steps to call a bond election for November. Those steps would be to work with our financial advisor and his legal team in order to draft all of the necessary newspaper announcements and resolutions and everything for that to be placed on the ballot. That last day for council to call an election for November is August 19th, which is the same day that we have our council meeting.
Okay, a discussion amongst council on this item.
No, I would just like to say thank you to the Bond Committee for their work and their diligence and their discussion in gathering information and gathering input and for providing their recommendations.
I do have some questions. Am I allowed to ask why it was a five to two?
I wasn't at, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but Robert was, if he can share some of the insight.
Yeah, sorry, I have a trouble seeing. Yeah, so two members wanted to keep the Z-shaped pool, and they voted in favor of the Z-shaped pool, you know, based on its success, and I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but essentially, they wanted to kind of keep the budget lower and keep the pool similar to what it, to what it was, making slight modifications to what we have to improve the existing shape.
Do you remember if there was how much lower? Like, you mean lower price point?
Yes, the two that voted against wanted a Concept 4, I believe, which was the $7.6 million concept rather than the $10.1. That's 7.6 represented the Z-shaped pool with slight modifications to the existing shape.
So essentially, putting back what we have today with slight modifications.
I have some other questions. I heard a rumor that we have $20 million laying around somewhere. Austin, do you know where this money is?
I hope earning interest. No, right now, we have, and this was all in the council packet, or in the budget book as well, for anybody that wants to go back and look at that, but right now, we are estimating that at the end of this fiscal year, we will end the year with roughly $7.4 million in the general fund fund balance. A 90-day operating reserve is roughly $5 million, which means we have about $2.3 million left over. In the audit that the council received back in March, I believe it was, in the audit, it obviously audits all of the funds that the city has, the general fund, the utility fund, capital improvements, and then all of our other funds, like capital replacement and those types of things. If you add up, I haven't done it, but if you add up all those numbers, it would probably be somewhere close to that 20, I would guess off the top closer to 17, but somewhere right around there, so I'm guessing, if that's the rumor you heard, they probably added up the fund balances across all those things. Each of the, each fund that the city has is earmarked for something special or specific. Utility fund is for water and sewer infrastructure. Capital improvements is for the specific projects in the capital improvements project. Capital replacement is for equipment and maintenance. Fire trucks are not cheap, so we save up every year for those. Same thing with vehicles and other equipment that we get. So while the, there might be a grand total of that dollar amount, all of those things are earmarked already. The general fund is where we have money that is available for use, a lot easier, it's not already earmarked. We have in the past saved up money and utilized that for building replacement funds, and that was used or is being transferred this year for the clubhouse costs, because we're praying for that project in cash. So right now, like I said, we're estimating about $7.4 million in general fund fund balance that is available for the council to use. Obviously, for our bond rating and those types of things, we want to keep at a minimum a 90-day reserve in order to be well-prepared and able to handle costs associated with storms like derechoes and hurricane barrels. We need fund balance in order to do that, to cover the costs. We will get some reimbursement, but we are still gonna have to pay about 25% of the total cost. So those, those things aren't cheap, and if we get a storm that for some reason does not meet the federal disaster declarations, and we have to pay all those costs out-of-pocket, that's a large amount of money. So those are the reasons why we keep big things like that. And every now and then, you might have some kind of major disaster, road sinkholes or anything like that you see all over the place, where you just, you need to have some cash on hand, otherwise you're gonna be going into debt for smaller things. So that's why we have the fund balance, and that's why we have, you know, a little bit of extra reserve there for those types of projects.
Oh, I thought so too, thank you. Another question? Earlier, somebody had mentioned keeping or possibly opening for part of the season, the current pool? So if, I mean, is this something that we could do? And if, if we could, how much would it cost to keep it open and maintenance and all that?
Yeah, that would certainly be council's prerogative if they wanted to allocate funds for all of the costs for a pool for next year. In total, it would take roughly $170,000 to run the pool. That's salaries, maintenance, pool chemicals, electricity, all, all of the things that go into running that. So council could, if they wanted to. If we delay a pool season, if we, if we delay construction till July, August, it's quite possible that we could have swim team in 2025, but you would likely not have swim team in the Jersey Village Pool in 2026 because it would still be under construction. So one way or another, if you rebuild the pool at its current location, swim team would be impacted at least one year.
So either way, so either we, if we decided we wanted to keep it, or have it open, we would have a 2025 swim team, but then, or swim, swim season, but then we wouldn't have the swim team meet?
Right, and 20, yeah, 2026 swim team would be impacted at that point. You could, you could have partial swim seasons for the community, but if, you know, it was mentioned swim team and they could go elsewhere, you, you would lose a swim team season at the Jersey Village Pool, one way or another, most likely.
But we also run the risk of a catastrophic failure and cutting their season short, no matter what.
That, that was my question, is about, you mentioned $170,000, and you said that's just like the normal operation cost, correct? That does not include pump failure or whatever?
So that would include like roughly $17-ish thousand in, in maintenance things? That would cover some of those small ones? But if you have a catastrophic electrical thing like we did last year, that was $18,000. If you had pool pump failures, you know, you're looking at $3,500 to $5,000, depending upon the total issue. So if you have any big, major issues, you're gonna, you're gonna be more than that.
I think, I think it helps to, in case anyone's thinking we're talking about hypotheticals up here, we blew through this year's maintenance budget for the pool before the pool opened. The, the fact that it is open this season was that concession that was being mentioned. There was talk about not even having this season, but with the understanding that if there was a major failure, and there could still be a major failure that might close the pool this season, we decided as a council that it was only fair to everyone to at least say, for the swim team and other groups that may be trying to make plans for next year, to give them as much heads up as possible so that we don't run into a situation where they may be, you know, not have an alternative if we close the pool right before the season's supposed to start, or right in the middle of the season. You know, the focus was really on trying to give people options so that their, you know, their plans weren't disrupted.
I have another question. So what was the number, 10, 10.1?
10.1 million.
Would council be, would council consider buying down that $10 million?
I would not up at the upfront, so just because we bond for 10.1 doesn't mean we use 10.1. I would prefer to bond for 10.1, let Austin and city staff negotiate on a pool that is similar or is like the suggested design or what is considered best use, and let's see what money we can save there. Just because, you know, because that's the thing, just because we bond for 10.1 does not mean we have to use it. And I think that's something, I hope everyone remembers that. That's for all of our bonding. We bond for the, what we assume will be the maximum amount we need, and then we use what we need. It's not, you know, it's not just a, it's not like a, use your money however you want. It's gotta be very specific. I would prefer to err on the side of caution to have that, because I would hate to earmark that 2.3 or whatever the amount is, and then we have a water fail, like something else go wrong. I think that would be presumptuous. Also, I do want to say thank you to the bond pool committee, the pool bond committee. And I do personally like the two-pool concept much better than what we have now. I think it's a lot cleaner, and I think when you, when we look at going forward, and Jersey Village looks at in 30 years, that that's gonna serve us a lot better than what we have currently.
Would there be a design committee?
I mean, I think that, that was essentially, part of their job was to look at the concepts and pick one. I mean, obviously, there's still little details to be worked out, but the idea was we wanted to get a sense of what they thought was appropriate in scale.
I think the Parks and Rec Committee would likely kind of take that design from here, and we can obviously take more citizen feedback and that type of thing as well. But I don't know that creating another committee would be necessary. I think we can utilize the Parks and Recreation Committee and citizen feedback.
And then get citizen feedback?
Sure.
One last question. So how does the cost of the pool tie into the fact that it's in a floodplain?
So the, the final report was not, did not really play into that as much. The cost to do that, obviously, your equipment and everything like that needs to be elevated. It'd be great to have storage space up high for chemicals and those types of things. That area, you know, part of that park right now is in the floodway. Keeping things out of the flood, floodplain is always ideal, but overall, the cost of building in the floodplain wouldn't be, wouldn't be a major impact onto that total budget, we don't believe. The permitting time might be a little bit longer, but I don't think that would be a major impact either.
I was gonna remind others that the pool flooded in 2016 during the, the tax day floods, and it was up and ready for swim season within, within a month, and I'm sure if we had an inconvenient in the summer, that, that brings other problems, but, like, more delays on using the pool, but I think the elevation of the pump houses is critical. I'm not sure about the setting of the pool itself is, but let's defer to experts on that as well.
I was just visualizing, and it was fine.
But for this, we're just accepting the recommendation. So with that, I will make a motion that we approve resolution twenty, twenty-four dash sixty-one, accepting the recommendation of the bond committee. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item K4, Consider Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Six Two, Closing the Jersey Meadow Golf Club Bridge to Vehicular Traffic. Robert Basford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item was brought to council a few months back on the April agenda, and we have tabled that discussion since then. Here's some updated information on the topic. Council requested the opportunity to gather information from residents tabling the decision temporarily, and recently, staff created a survey to gather feedback, and the results have been presented in Exhibit A. It is important to note that approximately forty-five of the three hundred and twenty-four responses came from non-residents. The only alternative that received fifty percent in favor was the one referencing the two dedicated right-turn lanes from Village Green Drive to Jones Road. To aid in the discussion, here's a bit of history on the golf course bridge. The bridge of the golf course was originally built when the course was privately owned. The course had nine holes and other golf amenities on the north side of the bayou. The bridge was necessary to get golf carts, mowers, and other equipment to that side of the course. In two thousand, the city bought the course. A portion of the north nine holes was purchased by Harris County Flood Control to be used as a detention pond, and the other portion of the nine holes and remaining golf amenities on the north side were sold to a private developer and turned into a housing development, now the lakes of Jersey Village. The bridge is approximately thirty years old. While it has had some inspections over the years, it does not receive the same bridge inspections that are done by Tech Dot of the other bridges in the city, and it is not a public road. When the city purchased the golf course, when the city purchased the golf course, Jersey Meadow Drive did not exist. According to the city council minutes on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, the city council authorized the construction of an asphalt driveway to connect Jersey Meadow Golf Course with Jersey Meadow Drive at a cost of sixteen thousand dollars. When Jersey Meadow Drive was put in, and the whole area was connected in approximately two thousand and four, that is when the cut-through traffic in that area began. The asphalt driveway that has had some repairs done over the years, but it is not built to the standards of a typical street. That has been confirmed in speaking with former councilors that this driveway connection was just more about putting asphalt down than building a street. As it is readily apparent to people that have not, that have gone over it, it was not built to withstand the amount of traffic that it would typically receive when the bridge was open. Although the city council approved the change order and the budget amendment for the clubhouse in June, the construction project remains incomplete. Additionally, we are not yet ready to open the bridge.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
As you guys have heard us over the last few council meetings speak about the bridge, and a lot of people have come up, and a lot of emails have come in, and then the bridge study that Austin sent along, we had three hundred and thirty respond, responses to that. So we've looked at those numbers, the emails, and I will say, regardless of what passes today, it was a very difficult decision, and we know that it was a very close on what the city really wanted us to do. Ultimately, for me, and now I'm just speaking on behalf of myself, I don't like going over that bridge. I don't feel like it's safe. When I speak to chief in chief about their vehicles not being allowed to go over it just because of the weight, it makes me very nervous about two cars going on at the same time. And now that this has been out in the open, as it not being checked regularly by Tech Dot, and all of the background information that Robert just disclosed, I, I personally get worried about the lawsuits that that might open up if there was anything that happened on the bridge with two cars that were waited, knowing what we know about its intentional, I mean, its original intention and use. So as far as just a lawsuit and safety stance, I think it's in our best interest to close it to vehicular traffic, comma, I think there's something that we can always expand on later for a different avenue outlet, or we could save, plan, budget, bond, that might be a little bit different of a route for an exit-entry there, but as far as it goes specifically for that piece of asphalt, I don't, I just, that's my consensus after reading and reviewing the data presented.
I have a question. Do we have an evacuation plan for the communities in that area, the homes in those areas?
So if the Rio Grande Bridge went out, and they had no access to get over to this side of the community, the only real access point would be taking down the wooden fence to have them go north out of the Rio Grande area that way. If the, the bridge is still open, and they could cross the Rio Grande Bridge and could not get out of the neighborhood otherwise, whatever, whatever we do, we could have as a modular thing where you could remove the ballast, so somebody could still get across the golf course bridge.
Have we had to do this? That you can remember, or that you know?
No, we did have it opened up during barrel, during, when the event was going on, just in case, but we've never had a, a major incident like, like that. And we've never had a long-term major incident like that. There have been times when the streets have not been passable for short periods of time, but nothing long-term.
There's an assessment that you're, that we were getting from the county, correct, about?
Right. When we requested the two right-hand turns on Village Drive, they said they would have to do a traffic engineering study. The traffic, Harris County Traffic Department is going to be doing that. They expect those results around the end of August.
I think I've mentioned it before, that I personally don't use the bridge because of a, thankfully, not an accident, but could have been an accident, someone not yielding properly. So I agree, it's, it's a parking lot. It continues to cost money to maintain the asphalt, because there's wear and tear on, on the asphalt. I think with the new configuration of the golf course clubhouse, and where there is parking, you now have to go past that bridge to get to those parking spots. I think that increases the risk of someone not paying attention, and with just golf, golf carts, you know, in the parking lot as well, I, I think it's an accident waiting to happen, and I think we would be remiss in not addressing the safety concerns just for the convenience of a few.
I want to say, I do want to point out, I'm not a, I don't typically frequent the golf course. I'm not a golfer. In June, I, my son took a golf camp at the golf course, which I regret, because now he thinks golf is the greatest thing ever. But that was actually one of my first experiences to actually be going during the daytime when there's golfers present, especially since there's still ongoing construction, but also that new section is open on the right, where you go in, past where the, where the, I'm going to call it the cart barn, I think that's what it is. I was shocked at how busy it was, and I was shocked walking across. He was so mad at me, he's ten years old, I made him hold my hand, because of, it was, it wasn't just, and this isn't with the bridge open, but it was between the carts, because it's very popular, between the carts, but also with that parking opened up on that side, like, people were flying through there. I have not yet come up, I haven't complained about it yet, because I haven't come up with a solution. I do like to have a solution if I complain about stuff, but I was, it, it did really kind of put, I, I had kind of, I've always been questioning the safety concept, like the safety concern, until I, until I legitimately experienced it, and that wasn't even with the, you know, with the bridge open.
People still fly through there, thinking that it's open, and it's, and then they gotta turn around and come back out.
And that was kind of what it was, there was a, there was two, two days in a row, there was a vehicle that just came flying in there, and I was just seriously, like, standing there, and I was like, I'm going to throw something at that car. So I, I was, I was shocked.
Yeah, people have asked me why the sudden concern. First, obviously, unless you're really, really into local government, you probably have not watched a whole ton of meetings, you might catch one here and there. I've expressed concern my entire time that I've been on council, when the questions come up about the golf course bridge. There have usually been a few of us that express concerns. The difference, however, was that at that time, the amount of, the number of people in carts moving in that parking lot were quite a bit less. You know, the parking lot, on an average day, during the day, would probably be about half-full, for the most part. Nowadays, parking lot is completely full. There are people moving, as Councilmember McCray described, people moving constantly through there. That is a recipe for disaster if you reintroduce cars. And at the end of the day, as others have mentioned, is a parking lot. There's a state law which prohibits people from cutting through a parking lot, and that logs this for a reason, because introducing large amounts of additional traffic to a parking lot where there are pedestrians and whatnot, again, is, is a recipe for disaster. And trust me, I appreciate the fact that people have become accustomed to that convenience, and now are inconvenienced by having to go elsewhere. I totally get it, as someone who, who frequently tries to get in and out of the city through Phillipine, I get it. You, you're describing what has been my experience in this city the entire time I've lived here. So I, I understand the problem, and I understand having that taken away is, is frustrating. But at the end of the day, again, as others have mentioned, I think that as a city council, if we are not taking seriously legitimate safety issues compared to just convenience, as soon as someone gets hurt, the fault rests with us. And that's, that's not something, that's not a responsibility that I would advocate that we take on. I think we, we need to err on the side of safety, and so that's why I have advocated to keep that bridge closed to vehicular traffic.
I do want to say, I do think the two turn lanes on Village Green, regardless, even without the bridge being an issue, I think that's a brilliant idea, and I'm really hopeful that the county study comes back in a positive light.
I, I think there are other lower-cost ways that we can reduce the, the traffic backup on Village and Village Green, and that will hopefully, you know, increase the time to get out of, to and from, from what is now.
And before the meeting, I was speaking with former councilmember Holden, and he also suggested maybe re-timing the lights from six-thirty to eight-thirty, to allow for more heavy turns, and I thought that was just another way to get Village Green a little faster. I thought that was a, a really good suggestion.
Something we can bring to the county?
Well, I wanted to say that I've only been on council now, what is my third meeting? I appreciate the agenda items. I have poured over the information, I've received the emails, I've read the posts, there was the study, three hundred-plus responders to the bridge survey. I think as council, it's incumbent upon us to prioritize safety over convenience, and I also have friends that live in the neighborhood who have given me their stories of nearly being hit. So I think safety is first.
If there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'm going to be the bad guy, and I'm going to make the motion that we approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Sixty-Two, and close the golf course bridge going forward. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those again?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item K5, Consider Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Six Three, Receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's Final Report Concerning the Request of Senate Avenue Pharmacy LLC Through Its Owner Laura Smith Williams For A Specific Use Permit To Allow The Operation Of A Retail Pharmacy Located At Seven Four One Two Senate Avenue, Jersey Village, Texas, Seven Seven Zero Four Zero Within The City Limits In Zoning District F. Rick Faircloth, Planning and Zoning Commission Chairperson.
P and Z met after the public hearing we had earlier, and we voted unanimous to issue the special use permit for the Jersey, for the Senate Avenue Pharmacy. It was unanimous recommendation back to the council.
Okay.
And that's our, our final report.
Does council have any questions for Rick on the P and Z report? Nope. Okay, thank you so much, Rick.
All right, you're welcome.
So we do have a resolution in order to be able to receive this, unless there's, we do also have an additional item afterwards to actually discuss the special use permit, but unless there's any real need to discuss the receiving of the report, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Sixty-Three. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item K6, Consider Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Two Zero, Amending The Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Of The City By Granting Senate Avenue Pharmacy LLC A Specific Use Permit To Allow The Operation Of A Retail Pharmacy Located At Seven Four One Two Senate Avenue, Jersey Village, Texas, Seven Seven Zero Four Zero And In Zoning District F, Providing Requirements And Conditions For The Specific Use Permit, Containing Findings And Other Provisions Related To This Ordinance, Providing A Penalty In An Amount Not To Exceed Two Thousand Dollars For Violations thereof, Providing For Severability And Providing An Effective Date. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so Mayor, this item is for the council to consider the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and consider the ordinance passing that recommendation.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this.
I trust planning and zoning on this. I've seen them in action, and I know how seriously they take this kind of stuff, so if they're willing to send something to us as a recommendation for something like this, I have absolutely no qualms about accepting it.
I agree with that. Wouldn't have to cut through the golf course to go to CVS anymore. Too, too soon.
Too soon.
Too soon.
That is too soon.
It's been a day, apologies, it's Monday.
It's been a week.
I'll make a, are you okay? Go ahead. I make a motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four Dash Twenty.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start.
Mayor, oh, can, can I jump in with a quick comment before we get to?
Sure, sure, sure.
So I did just hear from Center Point, those last six homes, apparently, that transformer was unable to be refused, and so they're trying to get a new transformer out, so we still have six without power in Jersey Village right now.
I'm glad they're actively working on it, so, okay. So, now that we have city manager comments, we'll go to mayor and council comments. Mayor Proten Mitchum.
Well, I got power last night. Ooh, I'm, I'm thinking about those six houses, we got it coming pretty soon. I wanted to thank Bobby for that prayer, it was wonderful. We are better united together, and that was really, I mean, that was beautifully said. I also wanted to thank, again, the amount of applicants for the committees. I think this is a new pattern of getting at least ten to come up for every committee, and I will say, it makes us so happy and excited to see so many.
will say it makes us so happy and excited to see so many old faces, new faces, all of, all of the faces, excited to help us make what, what it is. Um, and that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I've probably said enough for the evening, so, no specific comments from me.
Councilmember Rossing. Sorry, Drew. I totally passed you. From a remote somewhere, undisclosed location, Councilmember Wasson.
Oh, yes. Um, I'm in central Texas, which is a lot drier than, than southeast Texas right now. Um, but first, uh, I echo, uh, Councilmember Mitchum's comments about people volunteering, um, and keep applying. There's only so many spots, but we, you can see we're trying to consciously spread, spread it around because we think that there's a lot of diverse ideas in the city. Uh, speaking of pitching in, thank you to staff and the community over this past week, um, businesses, uh, employees, everything that have tirelessly worked, probably worked tons of overtime, tons of effort to keep the city running even without power. Um, you know, it, it, it wears on everybody, and with the heat, it wears on us more. But I think, uh, what Austin and his staff have done from communication and cleanup and that type of effort, getting, getting debris picked up today, one week after it was caused. I mean, that, that's no, no short of spectacular. So thank all the team for that, and, uh, I leave today, but I just got power last night. So, you know, it's, it's all good.
Okay. Now, Councilmember Rossing.
I have a few. I'd like to thank the bond committee for all your hard work and all your deliberation. I know it wasn't easy, uh, some days. I'd also like to thank the staff for all their hard work during this, uh, hurricane, and it was really nice to see neighbors helping neighbors. Um, I'd also like to congratulate somebody, Captain Robert Missile. He was presented with the award for the American Legion EMT of the Year at the American Legion Annual Conference, and we are very proud of him. He's also a neighbor of mine.
Councilmember McCray.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, and just from a, kind of echoing sentiments, but from a little bit of a different perspective, um, my family and I have been gone for the last three weeks, uh, arriving home today at just five PM, whatever day it is today. Um, and, uh, we've been out of the country. And so the fact that a hurricane happened while we were gone, and not only like out of the country, like very limited cell service, the fact that we didn't have to worry, oh my God, I'm going to cry. I'm so tired. Anyways, the fact that I didn't have to worry, eh, if a branch or anything had, like if a tree had fallen on my house and it hadn't been taken care of, I didn't have to worry about my fridge being cleaned out from no power by my neighbor who still doesn't have power today. She took care of that. I was contacted by maybe eight different friends in the neighborhood with photos of the damage, like light damage, nothing to write home about, literally, um, about, of our, of the stuff in our house and our yard, um, saying, you know, this was here, we've taken care of it, but we wanted you to see what it looked like. Sorry about your pear tree. Don't plant pear trees. Um, but just, to me, it's just such an example of the community we have here, which I know everybody knows, and I know everybody talks about it, but it's something to, it's something to say, it's something for us to see, but it's also something to experience it every day when you live here in Jersey Village. And I'm going to stop. So, thank you.
All right. I, I want to echo what other council members said. Uh, the, the, the support of the community for one another is really part of what makes this place special. Um, in addition, I do want to thank the city staff for all of the hard work they put in. I'm sure there were, especially at the beginning, some sleepless, uh, nights as the storm was coming in and, uh, the bayou was rising. I know I, I was a little worried because with cell phone service being spotty like it was, it was kind of hard sometimes to figure out what was going on. Um, so I, I want to thank the city staff for responding quickly under very challenging circumstances. Um, and I also wanted to thank, uh, Congressman Wesley Hunt and his office. They reached out before the storm arrived to check to see if we had everything we need, if there are any issues, checked during the entire thing. Uh, when Center Point was being a little slow, they, uh, advocated for Jersey Village. I didn't even have to ask them to. They just reached out and said, hey, uh, we want to help you out. We're going to be in contact with Center Point. What are some of the challenges you're having? Uh, so it, it, they have been a huge help, and I just wanted to thank them for that. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's all I have. Uh, so with that, we are going to move into an executive session. Uh, let's see, it's, uh, item N recessed regular session to convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section, Government Code, Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven Two, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven One. Uh, city council is now going to retire to a closed session at nine ten PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, uh, Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven Two, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven One, Consultations With Attorney In Connection With The Following Items. One, pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven Two, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven One, Consultations With Attorney, A Closed Meeting To Deliberate The Potential And Possible Purchase, Exchange, Sale, Or Value Of Real Property Located Within Terse Three. And Item Two, pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven Two, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven One, Consultations With Attorney, A Closed Meeting To Deliberate Information About The Possible Purchase, Exchange, Or Value Of Real Property Related There Too. Uh, we will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.